All right, good evening everyone and thank you for attending tonight's Montgomery Township School Board Meeting on January 23rd, 2024. Time is now 7:11 PM. We're now reconvenienced and open session. Your call please, Mr. Palmba.
Sure. Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Beal.
Yeah.
Ms. Frankel-Herman.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Spitz-Wallace. Ms. Svena.
Present.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Ms. Willock-Jurgen.
Here.
Thanks, Mr. Palmba. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this state is. The nation and every individual and every person in it.
Thank you. We'll now have our MTSD student report. Ms. Robb.
Good evening, Montgomery. This January has been well for the students of Montgomery High School. As this month is Muslim Heritage Month, MHS is celebrating the cultural and religious diversity that encompasses our community. There are various events hosted by the Muslim Student Association throughout the month. Students have also continued that same spirit in celebrating MLK Day and recognizing each other's Holocaust remember birthday. Students had the amazing opportunity to hear from Parrot Leonard, a New Jersey native and former Rutgers football player, who suffered a career-ending injury on the field and paralyzed him from the neck down in 2010. The Rutgers icon and motivational speaker addressed the students in all grades, shared his story of resilience and perseverance. Our student athletes played for some amazing causes recently with the 9th Annual Salute Service Hockey Game against Topol Valley and our recent Coaches vs. Cancer Basketball Tournament against Southfield. We are wishing all of our student athletes the best of luck with their upcoming sports. The first robotics kickoff event was held in the season. This is the team with 14-3's 20th anniversary hadn't been founded in 2004. Earlier this month, our Robert Enig nations team traveled to Hershey, Pennsylvania to compete and attend the YMCA Auto Online Conference. The 90 and students earned 20 awards and recognitions in total, with junior David G earning the title Secretary General of the Conference of over 1,000 students. Students from the 10th grade English recently had the opportunity to travel to New York City and do a walk-through of the Big Apple, the guys' home of Paul Field, the protagonist of The Catcher in the Rye, and all the laborers we've discussed in class. The MHS peer program had their annual Peer 2 Flower Sack Baby Project, in which Peer 2 students construct a baby out of flower and are responsible for it throughout the week. Students were required to carry their babies lovingly in class and throughout the school day and take them home with them. They took pictures every day to chronicle their flower babies' lives, providing them with a real-life perspective on the many responsibilities of parenthood. The MHS vocal program held a very successful winter choir concert showcasing some of the amazing talent that one has. This month, there was no school on Tuesday the 16th and Friday the 19th due to snow and no school on the 10th due to flooding, which was a nice break as the end of the semester approaches and Semester 1 grades are having a harder season. We are looking forward to a new semester of continued success for our students at Montgomery.
Thank you, Ms. Robb. We'll now move to superintendent reports, presentations.
Good evening, everyone. There are two presentations tonight, one from the New Jersey School Boards about policy and the other from our school board attorney, Mr. Rod Hara, on school board ethics, role of the school board. Okay, I'll just start with just a little quick overview of what's happening in the schools. So, as you all know, the weather has not been kind to us this winter. The 23-24 school year calendar had three emergency contingency days built in, and we have used all three plus an additional day. As the calendar outlines, any additional days past the three built-in days are taken from the spring break week, beginning with the last day of spring break, which is Friday, April 5th, 2024. Communication was sent out today that notes the days that school will be in session due to having the four emergency days. There have been some inquiries on why we do not have virtual days instead. The reason is that the option for virtual learning is limited. School districts need to be closed for three consecutive days before the virtual option can be permitted to count for the required 180 student school days. The exception to this is if the majority of schools in district are used as a polling place for on Election Day. That's the only exception to the three consecutive day rule. In that instance, schools may apply for the virtual day to count towards the 180 days. So unfortunately, or fortunately, we have never had to close this year for three consecutive days. So therefore, virtual is not an option at this time. Another question that is coming up is why the last day of spring break? The first day of spring break, Friday, March 29th, and then the Monday, April 1st are contractually days off for staff members. Some of you may see them on the calendar. They are Good Friday and Easter Monday. So those are contractual days, which is why we start at the end of spring break this year. If it was the opposite, if spring break was the week before and then the Monday, we would start at the beginning of spring break. So each year, that will change. Hopefully, we don't have to do this again. At Montgomery High School, our science supervisor, Jason Sullivan, and the high school biology teacher, Mr. Chris Resch, were honored this past weekend with the inaugural Brunch Week Heartless Award for Excellence in STEM Teaching and Community Leadership. We are so proud of this recognition that highlights their hard work with students and teachers in the STEM field. Students of our Science Olympiad team traveled to the Elite MIT Invitational. They actually left at 5:00 AM to get ahead of the storm on Friday, which was awesome. This past weekend, a place in the top 10, earning them an invite back for next year and a great deal of respect from the schools across the nation. This weekend, our Science Olympiad team will travel to Columbia to compete. So a little closer. Students and staff had the opportunity to listen to New Jersey native Eric LeGrand share his story of personal triumph, hope, strength, and perseverance. Eric suffered a life-altering injury while playing football at Rutgers University that left him paralyzed. His life story has unfolded differently than one that he once thought, but with no less joy, personal satisfaction, or success. We will all experience adversity throughout our lives. We continue to encourage everyone to continue the conversation that was started with Eric's presentation and hone in on the fact that it is our reaction to those difficult moments that will ultimately define who we are as human beings. This was a great lesson for all of our high school students. This past week, our Orchard Hill, the schools' Cubs participated in their annual Week of Service to honor the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. Students participated in service activities to support good citizenship and service to others. Our Cubs collected items for the Montgomery Food Pantry and colored designs for our Color a Smile, a local nonprofit organization that distributes cheerful drawings to senior citizens, U.S. troops overseas, and patients in local hospitals. To end their Week of Service, the Cubs participated in a march for acceptance, displaying their handcrafted signs for peace, friendship, and kindness. At LMS, the Black Student Connection has been planning celebrations to honor Black History Month. The cast and crew for the spring play Finding Nemo Jr. have been busy practicing. LMS is excited to host the 2024 Winter Bowl on February 9th. They are also hosting the naturalization ceremony scheduled for March 20th, and the honored host is our mayor, Mina Singh. I would now like to call up New Jersey School Boards for our presentation on policy services. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Kim Gaddy. Can you hear me? Thank you for having me. I'm a Hoover, so this is static, so I'm gonna sway a little and I apologize. Thank you for having me here tonight and have the opportunity to present you with information regarding the policy services offered by New Jersey School Boards Association. Additionally, inadvertently, you've offered me the opportunity to take a drive-through canvas of my college, TCMJ. As I came up this evening, I thought, let me take a little tour. And it's very different in the many years since I've been there, so a little stroll down memory lane for me tonight. I do have handouts, everything that is printed. If you would like, I can pass these out. Yes? Just by way of a little background, my name is Kim Gaddy, so I'll start with the introduction. I put the little "thank you" first. But I had been an attorney for many years, practicing in education law. And then I took a little detour, and I was the coordinator for the State Board of Examiners for about 10 years. And I am now with the New Jersey School Boards Association as the Director of Policy. Feel free, if you have questions, as I go through the slides, to interrupt me. I don't mind taking questions and go, or however the chair would like to handle that. I'm gonna start off by talking about some part dues-based services. Your dues to New Jersey School Boards Association does provide you with a wealth of information and benefits. So this is just the home screen, sort of the landing page, that can help you navigate to get to the policy section. It's just NJSPA.org. You can go to our services, visit policy. One of the dues-based services that are offered is the Critical Policy Reference Manual, which is available to all members. You can navigate the policy. You'll hit that landing page that will give you a link to the policy PRM. It contains model policy language, annotated legal references, and many of them come with a hyperlink for you with a separate legal reference page that not only includes legal citations, but also information regarding police law that is related to the reference. And then there's also information on the policy update list. As you know, laws change, regs change, guidelines changes, and when those things happen, you can update the policies. And they are put on the web, whether, depending on the service that you had, you can get kind of work for them, or they are always available when they are issued. You can see them every year annually. They'll go up in sort of chart looking form. This is just a sample, so you can see what one of the CPRM looks like. This is all still in the dues-based section. We designate policies in this way. They have a file code system so that topics are organized, we'll call it categorically, for letter of the word. And that's just sort of a quick look. But you can see, you can download that as a Word document, as a PDF document. There are attachments. So there is a different additional functionality in what you just saw on that screen. This is the little references, which I think is important so that you know where your policy is coming from. We do note that it's a monitored policy as well, so we'll see there information on where it is monitored and keep that. You can see the blue language underlined, or the links, I should call them, undermanded, so that it will take you, so you can see the actual language of the reference, this action. Additional dues-based service is the Mental Development Job Descriptions. There is a specific amount of types of job descriptions that are available online, but you can always reach out to us. We do have a multitude of other job descriptions that may not be what you would call the more standard. We get requests from across the state, and we do have additional sort of less common job descriptions that could be available should anybody need to see any of that. And that is also available to you if they have dues-based. Policy consultation. So we attempt, obviously not on a weekend, but to give you a response. Even if it's, we need to look into this more within 24 hours. We also have what we call the Electronic Clearinghouse. We have access to national information regarding what other states might be doing with regard to policies, so not just limited to New Jersey. These counterparts may have things that they're addressing, they're dealing with, that New Jersey doesn't have yet. But we share information, so we can access some additional information that may help you, that you're developing some of your policies, depending on what they are. Drafts and samples of different things, samples of regulations, the job descriptions that I mentioned. We also offer what we call the Wellness Check. And that's, we can review your manual and go policy by policy and to determine whether it's missing content, it's not up to date properly, and indicate where you're missing information, or whether you're missing an entire policy, and provide you with some feedback with regard to the status of your entire manual. The fee-based policy service. So now we're going to discuss, those are all the things that are available despite being a member of the New Jersey School Boards Association. The first is, we have a customized policy writing service. We also provide the policy update notification. So although the updates do go up online, there's a service that will notify your district that there has been an update and online manual publication. I apologize, I think the centering of that is bawf, or I thought it was correct, so my apologies. Online manual publication as well, so we do offer a service where your manual will be serviced online. So we'll talk about each one of these. As I don't have to tell you, I'm sure you know that one of your primary responsibilities is establishing policies. And we can assist in ensuring that your policy manual is in compliance with federal and state laws, and then also reflects your district, where you have the space to have discretionary policies and conditional modifications that are unique to your district. We can coordinate your manual, and you can coordinate it because the custom manual aligns to the information that's in the dues-based services. So you have access to that. You can apply the policy updates, and that's not an additional cost that's included as part of the custom manual contract. All of our policies are reviewed by our Labor Relations Division or unit, and the cost for the conversion from another vendor is $9,000, and we can spread that over to this one here. We develop a manual. We attempt to develop a manual that will communicate what your vision is for your board. We can evaluate what existing policies you have. I'm sure there are a number of discretionary policies you may want to keep and some you may want to get rid of. We can look at all the policies and make sure that they're up to date for compliance because a policy may have a minor piece that was updated and wasn't properly updated. You can identify where that gap is and add the information. We try to preserve your content where possible. For instance, if there's something unique to your district regarding, you know, maybe certain information if it belongs to a superintendent or a court is distributed by superintendent, whereas other districts would do it by a business administrator. We try to acknowledge those nuances, including your district, so that your new manual reflects some of those more practical aspects as well. We do provide you with some information that we ask as a questionnaire so we can understand some of the details of your district in terms of, you know, A to twelve, information on choice, different programs and offerings, so that there are policies that are not required but relevant to your district. We can include this. We say that your policy history is retained. The system does allow you to show that a policy is retired. So it doesn't just go away forever. You can kind of keep that historical link that you can look back and say, well, that was retired, or that was amended, or that was modified. And we can assist in developing new policies that help meet your needs going forward. I know I'm talking very quickly, so if there's any questions, feel free to interrupt me. The addition of critical policies that are in your manual is one of the additional benefits. We can remove or redundant policies. Sometimes, as laws change, new policies are created that might relate to something else, but they've just been added on as new policies. So you could have three different simply policies that relate to three different units or in some way. And so we attempt to sort of consolidate all that. That way, when you're public, you're a board member, you're a community, goes online, they can sort of find a universe of everything that relates to that issue. Because as you know, sometimes there's bits and pieces everywhere. So the New Jersey School Boards tries to assimilate that, so you're not hunting for different policies. And we prefer the idea of one policy over four. If it makes sense and fits into something else, we try to assimilate them together. I said before, the legal citations with hyperlinks, which I value that if you know where it's coming from, you know why you have the policy. We can assist in updating any regulation you might have, as well as, like I said, the discretionary policy that you want, that you may not want anymore. We have an alphabetical index that's also available to you. And again, you have access to the assistance from our Policy and Labor Relations provisions. We work with you to extend what you prefer. You can receive ongoing support during the project, after the project. We're on call. We're en route away, and we are here to help you. Regular updates. So I refer to the update process. This is just a sample of the page that, as a GP member, you'll see what that update looks like. You can kind of see at the bottom of the chart there. And you can see historically that we have update lists that go back to 2013. We call it the PAR service. It comes as a custom manual contract. It comes as part of that service. So you will receive an email alert notification of the policy updates and changes. The updates generally are related to legal changes, changes in guidance, changes in regulations. You, I would say, you know, every quarter or so, you would get some of that information, unless there is the need and we're just coming out of the bill season where there's been a lot of passage of new things. So you can expect updates sort of as that tide turns, it kind of comes hand in hand with that. The online manual publication. The board uses a service called Board Docs, which is a diligent brand company. If you have that, this is no cost to you. You can service your policy manual through that contract that you already have. If you do not, it is a cost of just shy of $2,000. It's publicly available on your website. Click the link. You can get three different views. You have an editor view, a public view. You can save things in draft, and you can make them active. You can retire them. You can create your own table of contents. You can provide authorized users to make certain updates, and that allows you to limit. Some people can and cannot make updates. You can cross, another important thing is cross-referencing to policies that I brought to mention, to the point of having one policy and then knowing that there might be something relevant in another. We'll have a list of cross-references at the bottom that you might go and go, oh, there might be something else on this in this policy. Keyword searchable as well. And again, I heard this is a little long regulation. Anybody have any questions?
How long does it take to do a full review of all policies in the district?
The full review, what I reference is the Wellness Check. So we have a queue system. We do sort of the first come, first served. We are working on about September requests right now, so I would estimate it's about six months right now. Especially when they are converting a different file code system, they are time-intensive, yeah.
So that's because there is a queue, but like once you, it's literally, you know, you take the district and you're actively working on it? So how long does it take to do that?
If we're customizing your manual and converting it to New Jersey School Boards Association, the contract can be anywhere from six months to a year. So it would be about, it would be about the same time period. I thought you were referencing the Wellness Check, which is the dues-based. So they're sort of around the same. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaddy. On slide four or five, the categories monitored and mandated, are these your old classifications right at NJSPA?
Yes. This is Kim.
Yeah. I was gonna ask you to define what mandated means. Is that your definition of something that is a federal or a state law that is required, or how do you define mandated?
Manded is if the policy itself is required by a law, federal, state, or law. Yes.
I guess I'm wondering, did I understand that all the boards will be able to see proposed updates to the policies?
You operate in the committee, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, when you say proposed updates, in terms of when New Jersey School Boards make some potential update? Yes, the board has access to that, yes. But the adoption belongs to you, obviously.
Right. But I mean, the question is, because if you have a policy, do you see that, you see the changes that are proposed, but it's been fairly limited as to who sees those? So under this system, we would all be able to see the proposed changes?
We, I mean, the way it is set up with an email alert, so if it's a custom manual contract and you get that PAR service as part of it, which is included, the system can be set up so that emails go out to the full board, and you get what we call a clean and market version, so you can actually see the distinction of where the changes are. So you're not sort of looking for what those changes are.
Right.
And just about the portal, it sounds like you keep the policy that is being updated with some potential red lines and then the final version. Is that kept historically so that if we want to go back and reference the policy that we changed, that we can actually see that?
Yes, it would be when we go back to it. There. So on the left-hand side of the column from 2016, I have that little chart. That and the links that you were just scrolling below, you can see the actual documents that are related to it. So you could go back to 2016 and see a chart that contains all the updates that have been made over time. And adding on the NJSPA.org site right now.
And then also, you said that within 24 hours, let's say we identify something in the district. We feel it's important to have a policy. There will be resources available to us to help us write that policy and run it through the standard process.
Yes. I really strive to get back to you, even if it's just a, you might use your time, this is what it's going to happen, to get back to you within 24 hours, so that you know, we can provide you with samples. We don't, we can give you samples, but we can't write the policy for you. We always do also recommend that you consult your board attorney because we do not provide legal advice as to legal sufficiency in terms of how, any changes you're making and what you're including, what you're taking away. But we can provide you with samples, and if it's sort of a novel policy, meaning you don't have it before, there might not be one like it in the state, but I said we do have access nationally. There might be a national policy in another state where they're using something that might help you get some ideas of what you, you know, you want to look at and kind of talk things through. You know, one policy that's hot topic now is artificial intelligence. Do you want a policy on that? There's other states, we have access to a lot of information. There's a lot of work across the country that's happening with policies like that.
Could you just clarify what kind of, so you said the policy, you don't write the policy that you would recommend for us to coordinate with the distributor? Do you do that?
We do provide you with, whether it's a critical policy we have a sample of, or we provided you with the policy manual, give you a recommendation. But if it's something unique or novel or new to your district that needs a lot of customization, that's different, we can certainly talk through and provide some consultation to that, but the end result, we always recommend the content. Okay.
Thank you. And you also provide the push, kind of push updates. So if something comes out from New Jersey Legislature, the updates are being made, it's a new mandate, let's say, or there's a guideline that's being provided, you communicate that to us via a push message? And do you differentiate between the guideline and the mandate?
Yes, all policies will have that header. So if we make an update to a policy, you'll see that little three box, monitored, mandated, or critical other, and it will have, you know, the X in the designation. You also have access as board members to introduce board notes, so that when those go out, we would, if we're making an update, we would include information. There's a new bill that was just passed on X, Y, and Z. Here's more information about it, potentially a link to an updated policy, things like that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so just one more. So now you say that you search through the policies and you find duplicates or things that are duplicative. How would that work? I mean, then one of the policies would be dropped at that point, so that'd be a proposal.
Yeah, sometimes over time, there is something that was changed, and there was a policy that was left under an old code, and then a new one was inserted, and if we identify, and if there's a conflict and there's one that says something slightly different. If it's different because it's past law or it's been changed and updated, you would obviously go with the one that was valid, you know, for the time that you're in. If it's something that's unique to your district, we'd certainly talk about which is the one that you want to apply. All right. Thank you very much again. I appreciate it. Oh, I have a question.
So I guess like by talking to other districts, there seem to be a lot of districts interested in your services. So if you are, I guess I want to ask you this. How capable are you to take many more districts?
That's a great question. We are working on increasing staff, and I have staff that are coming aboard. I began in September, so I am fairly new to the New Jersey School Boards Association as a director, and we've identified a need for additional staff, and we have taken action to get that back together. Thank you all very much. Have a great meeting and I'll look forward to it further. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have a presentation from our board attorney, Rod Hara.
Next up, we have a presentation from our board attorney, Rod Harrow.
Good evening, everybody. I have been asked to make a presentation on the School Ethics Act. And what I have before you is a PowerPoint presentation that I would like to, to follow, but not necessarily read to you. I trust you all are able to read on your own. So what I'm going to do is to try to highlight some slides that would be helpful for you to better understand the School Ethics Act. And I think for specifically new trustees, you're in for a rude awakening. You know about schools, there are controversial issues, you have certain thoughts and opinions, how schools should function. And then when you're elected to the board, you're ready to set the world on fire. And then all of a sudden, there's a harsh realization that there are limitations in what you actually can or cannot do. And I think it is something that is very foreign in the concept, because you are expected to do things to make the school better. And you perhaps had a, a campaign focusing on some issues. But then a harsh realization comes in, is it's not as easy as you thought it was. The most important thing is to recognize it does not necessarily mean that your enthusiasm of what you're trying to accomplish should be warranted. It's just a matter of understanding what role is of a board member. And once that understanding sets in, you would be able to function and be more effective as a board member. So the first slide we have is what are boards of education? Boards' authorities are dictated by statute. And in this slide, it specifically states that boards enforce the rules of the United States Board of Education. And it says that you may amend and repeal rules for the governing of the board, otherwise the board's policies and regulations. So far, so good, it seems pretty easy. But the third bullet says to perform all acts and do all things consistent with the law and the rules of the state board necessary for lawful, lawful conduct, equipment, and maintenance of the school district. Seems like a pretty broad charge. So while it's clear, you develop a policy, it's clear that you follow the law, how do you navigate that last bullet? Which seems to give you directions on basically accomplishing what you thought you could accomplish. And that's where my presentation is going to try to somehow reel it in some way. And what I mean is that you have to channel your energies in a certain fashion within the confines of what your statutory authority is doing. So this slide, the most common obligations that we focus on, on what a board is obligated to do would be approve curriculum. Second would be adopting budget, hiring the necessary personnel in the district after considering the recommendations of superintendent, and develop policy. Those would be the four major responsibilities of a board of education. And the problem comes, how do I do all of this when the school district functions and has to be administered? And that's where we look at the line of what you can or cannot do to be creative. Because all four bulleted items require you to take action to satisfy the requirements. But each and every one of the requirements relies on you following the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. So what and how does this all happen? The board is a collective entity. Each trustee, in and of himself or herself, does not have the ability to make decisions in what a board of education previously has been authorized to do, adopt curriculum, policies, hire personnel, budget. Each trustee is one in the whole. And what you need to understand is you have to work within the operations of the whole. And the decisions made by a board are made at a public meeting. The president's, or the people in the audience. So they can see what is being done, what actions taken, what deliberations conducted, to make them understand how you as an individual trustee and the board collectively is fulfilling the statutory obligations. There's always talk about the open public meetings act. And that means that board action has to take place at a public meeting. There is, there are exceptions and deliberations that you remain able to engage in executive discussions without the public being present. But the final action with very limited exceptions, which essentially is a public action at a board meeting. So you may have committees. The committees are less than the majority. It's not subject to the open public meeting act. But the committees do not have authority to bond the board. The committees would be making recommendations to the full board, and the full board will be acting at a public meeting to determine what actions to be taken as a result of the determination made and the decisions by the committee. One of the dilemmas board members face is yes, actually act in a place at a public meeting, but how do I otherwise communicate with my fellow trustees, volunteers, and administration in assisting you making decisions at a public board meeting? And one of the dilemmas is how to properly communicate with your trustees on issues before the board. And the biggest problem that board members experience is the natural inclination to communicate with trustees on board-level business by way of email or text. You are not able to communicate with each other on board-level business by emails or texts where you are effectively discussing the merits or lack thereof on any issues that are before the board. So the proper method of communication has to be, where there's any questions, comments, or concerns that trustees would have, they are phoned through the administration. And then the administration would then be able to determine how to disseminate the information with the fellow trustees. So recognizing the infrastructure that you work with is important. Because if you engage in emails, messages to all the trustees, you are going to run the risk of them responding to you and effectively they factor in engaging in board-level business. So the tenet that we, we circle is that we understand that public action takes place at board meetings, discussion, deliberation, or agenda hiring are taking place at a public meeting with the members of the public president. So how do the board and administration function? Well, it's a board's direct responsibility to remake the policy, both plans, the outreach outcome, but not manage the day-to-day operations. That's the mantra of a board member. It is so easy and tempting to want to inject yourself in issues pertaining to the administration of the district. But it's got to be a little voice here that says, you can't do that. If you do have concerns, you can share those concerns with the administration, and the administration would determine how to properly address it. But you cannot micromanage the administration of the school district, even though you have an opinion and a belief that certain things should or should not be done in the circu- circuit. Your comments can be shared, but you cannot superpose your judgment upon the administration of how you believe the school district should function. The board specifically bifurcates the responsibility to administer the school district. You have the superintendent who deals down with the educational issues. And you have the business administrator that deals with the functions. But when you come to the realization also that even though you are a trustee and you think there are certain ways things should be done, that little voice has to tell you that you have to temper your concern and your vision, and that it's not your responsibility to administer the school district, but to see that schools are being properly administered. Some board members believe that as a trustee, I have been favored by to go visit the school, visit classrooms. That is not appropriate, and it's considered to be an act of the mission of the school. As a trustee, basically, you have no different authority than a member of the public who does want to visit the school. You have to follow the implications of the school's policy. If there are issues that you have, let's say, pertaining to something in the school that you would perhaps want to exert on your own, the best you can do is express a concern to the administration, and the administration will follow up, determine what they think should be done to address that concern. Are you, as an individual trustee in the administration, going to agree on every single item? And the answer is probably not. But it is important that there will be a cooperative relationship where there will be an exchange of information that doesn't arise in an adversarial situation. Now, it's easier to communicate, argue, and engage in that discussion. But the word of caution would be that when we have an agenda hiring before the board and it requires questioning of the recommendation, perhaps you trustee debate on a recommendation, you are entitled to question, but you need to question in a way that is professional, not adversarial. Because one of the tenets of the School Ethics Act and the Code of Conduct would be that you're obligated to support your staff, and particularly the administration, in performing their duties. It doesn't necessarily mean that you would be agreeing with everyone's decision, but you need to treat your administration and talk about staff in a professional manner. That's how you would convey to the public, you're supporting your personnel. Directly, if they are performance-related, they should have a staff member. It can be something of an executive session discussion where privacy rights are respected and rights are used. But it's not something that should be a subject matter of a public discussion. People see your name and phone numbers on the website. There is going to be a tendency for people to contact you about problems that you're dealing with. There may be people who supported you in the election process, and there would be an expectation that I bring the problem to you, that you do whatever is necessary to get the problem resolved. While on the one hand, you are not going to be rude and insensitive to that inquiry, but once you're aware of the concern of a, of a parent, or even just a resident, you would point them in the direction of the superintendent of schools and have their concerns addressed by the administration in the chain of command. You have to, just every thinking about it, you want to help. It's incumbent upon you to hear what you have to say, but make sure you explain to the resident or the parent of what your limitations are. And you would be more than happy to share the concerns with the administration who they follow appropriate procedures. So I think it really requires you to understand what you can or cannot do. You do not necessarily need to consent or indicate to what that concern is, but to hear and listen, and then make sure that the concerns are appropriately forwarded to the administration to follow up. The Code of Ethics has a mantra, "I will support and protect school personnel and profit towards their duties." And that's a concept I learned to you before. And that is that you're not going to be a needed critical of staff members while in the public. But to the extent to which your concern on staff members' foils that be addressed appropriately with the administration and crew, ultimately to an executive discussion depending upon what the circuit faces. So it doesn't mean that any concerns you may have would not be heard if you have to follow the appropriate form of having those concerns addressed. Remember, you consider the recommendations of the superintendent, but it doesn't necessarily mean you're obligated to accept every recommendation of the superintendent. Keep in mind that the superintendent is hired for her professional expertise, and is giving you her professional recommendation. It doesn't mean you have to accept it, but you can't reject it for arbitrary, unreasonable, or capricious reasons or other reasons that are not reflected in your assessment of what you're addressing in the school district. What you want to make sure that any disagreement doesn't result in a perception that administration, and it's not specifically only the superintendent, but the, the, the system manager or the principals are not supported by the board, could that would then undermine the effectiveness of that administrator in performing their duties for which you hired them? How does the board act? Well, the board is an entity. One individual doesn't speak on behalf of the board. And in accordance to your board policy, the spokesperson of the board is the board president. So to the extent to which individual board members want to reflect the position of the board, your policy delegate their responsibility to the board president to speak on behalf. Not only does that make the most sense in terms of the boardly operations of the communication with the public, but you know more than the risk that individual board members would be making statements inconsistent with the majority of the board or inconsistent with the board president, and sending mixed messages to the public as to what is the position of the board. So that policy is hard and true. That enables a district to function no matter what the issue may be. Another common area on the School Ethics Act that you run the risk of potential violation is the issue of confidentiality. The three areas that are parallel in confidentiality are personnel matters, students, and negotiations. Those are second. And then to the extent to which there are any discussions by the board, and particularly individual trustees that involve any of these three, it's taboo. Stay away from it. It's going to result in ethics violations and privacy rights violations if in fact you violate. So the easiest mantra would be, anytime something involves those three, include your discussions. Now, you are going to be reporting with a lot of knowledge in your head when you discuss these issues in executive session. And it's sometimes very, very difficult to separate what you know at a public meeting or what you know in an executive session. My best guidance would be, rather than try to parse out words, ask yourself, does this subject matter involve any of those three topics? And if it does, even remotely, that's something that you would not share with anyone else outside the board in an executive session. Code of Ethics. There is a School Ethics Act, and there is a Code of Ethics that governs the conduct of trustees. The biggest problem- The biggest problem you have is how to navigate through prohibited conducts and Code of Ethics violations. The prohibited conduct is specific and designated as what conduct is prohibited, not taking any action that would benefit you or him or their member. When such complaints like that are filed, the School Ethics complaint would be reviewed by the Ethics Commission. And if they made the determination that the facts in the laws are true, would constitute a violation of the School Ethics Act, a complaint would be issued and a deputy attorney general from the state would prosecute that complaint. On the other hand, the violation of the Code of Conduct, that is something that a private person would file a complaint against. And it will be a dispute between the private person who files complaint against the trustee and the trustee. And the attorney general's office is not on the act, defense or prosecution. The Board is not reporting to the School Ethics Act complaint or an alleged violation of the School Code of Conduct. It's up to an individual who believes that the act has been violated and determined whether to file a complaint. And it's not a complaint against collectively the Board, it would be a complaint against individual Board members. So which is why the focus on what you can or cannot do is not collectively the Board, but individually, because the vulnerability to potential violation lies on your shoulders because you have to make a determination as to whether the conduct may be subject to a violation of the School Ethics Act. Sometimes you may not know, because I made reference how you have that third authorization on what you can do and it seems to give you a license to do an awful lot. And then when you look at the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics, you realize it's being whittled down somewhat limited. And particularly a new trustee who's just elected and doesn't understand the nuances, you have to understand it. So then what are two things can be done? You could either seek assistance with the consent of the Board president to get a legal opinion on whether the conduct you're contemplating may be a violation of the School Ethics Act, or you could seek an advisory opinion from the School Ethics Commission to give you guidance before you take action that may be be vulnerable to a violation of the School Ethics Act. So those are two mechanisms of assistance to help you deal with potential violations. I talked about the Code of Conduct and the Code of Ethics, the real, I would say, the checklist on what you can or cannot do, because I would work in the assumption when we go on the prohibited conduct, we're not dealing with a trustee who is potentially going to take action that would benefit him, his family, or our family member. The biggest problem would be how to navigate through the Code of Ethics. So the first mantra of the Code of Ethics is how we ought to hold and enforce all laws and regulations under the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to the school. So what this basically means, you may disagree with the law or regulation, but you have the legal obligation to follow and enforce the rules that have been adopted by statute and promulgated by the State Board of Education. That is going to be guiding principles. You have to comply with the law even though you may not agree with the provisions. B, I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. That is a guiding principle, but more often than not, this does not present an issue for trustees complying with it, because the vast majority of the time, this is why you're elected and this is what you are required to do and that's why you become a Board member. B is it's compromised if you make decisions basically with your self-interest and it's not with your law of welfare. So I would like to give all the trustees who benefit of that, that it be something that they would adhere to, because that is why you want to be a trustee. C is more difficult. I will combine my board actions to policymaking, planning, and raising, and I will help to frame policies and plans early after boards, filter those to be affected by them. We had a presentation before, whether it was intentional or just not happened that way, about the importance of policy. That is the overall framework upon which we do operate. That's one of your most important functions is to develop the policy and equally as important, to adopt them and apply them consistent with public record. D is the one section that results from the most ethics complaint to file in these tenets. I would carry out my responsibility, not within the schools, but together with my fellow Board members to see that they are run well. I think it's easy to say, you showed the medicine schools, but it's got to be a head inside. How do you see they will run well? And I think you resolve that dilemma is the end part, that if they're not run well, there will be a problem or an issue that will be brought to your attention and there will be a scumming upon you to apply the policies to make sure that they are run well. It seems inconsistent, but see that they run well is kind of the end part. When the determination is made, it didn't run well and it results in a problem that would need to be addressed. So it almost seems counterintuitive, but whenever those concerns are about the administration of the school, the best you can do is surprise the administration of what the problem is, but you can't tell them what should be done, but indicate that there is a perceived problem and delegate that responsibility to them, which are hired to how the proper minister of the school. C, I will recognize that authority rests in the Board bed and will make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the Board. Kind of easy to say that I recognize authority with the Board, but the other, make no promises or take private action that may compromise the Board, results in a perception. And what I mean by a perception, it may very well be that you yourself are not engaging any action that will benefit yourself, but it is the appearance of a priority that will trigger the prohibition and the application of this aspect of the Act. Even though your intent may not be to do so, if your action are perceived, that is equally deemed to be a potential violation of the Act. F, I will choose to surrender my independent judgment, special features, or partisan politics group, or use the school for personal gain or for the gain of friends. One little way that seems to be easier to apply, once again, is the perception that an independent judgment may be compromised even though your acts did not have any intent to convey a special benefit to a friend, group, or organization. So when you take an answer, it's not only that you believe that my intents are pure, you have to then ask the question differently. How is the public going to perceive my actions? Would we perceive that there was a purpose behind it that wasn't pure and it didn't involve a potential action that would compromise your independent judgment? And if you look at the Act, even though you don't have any intent, if it places you in a situation that could be perceived, that is the situation you want to avoid. G, I touched upon it before about the confidentiality, follow the four bullet points that would be the items that would be taboo that you would stay away from. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief School Minister. The process is, the superintendent makes a recommendation. It doesn't impose an obligation upon you to accept the recommendation, but the consideration has to be given because she's a professional and you hired to make that recommendation. So long as you're reasonable for rejecting it, it wasn't arbitrarily reasonable. I will support and protect school personnel and private performance of their duties. I alluded to before that you really can't be overly critical of your administrative staff in the presence of the public. You wouldn't mind that credibility. It doesn't necessarily mean that you would agree to everything that they're doing, but if there's a concern about whether you are pleased with the manner in which an administrator has conducted the performance, those would be subjects of an executive personnel decision. Because the moment you're going to be criticizing public, you'll have a tough question as to whether the legitimacy behind the criticism and would undermine the effectiveness of the administration who are imposing the responsibility of performing their duties to the best of their ability. And J, we touched upon it before. Any complaints? Refer to the administration for follow-up. This slide basically puts into perspective what you can do in terms of about the voting. I've touched upon it before, so I'm going to go over it very quickly. Examples of violations. You can directly order school personnel or become in the daily activities or functions of the school. Dividend access complaints have involved where a trustee has decided to confront an employee or what the trustee believes that the employee should or should not do, that would be a violation. You do have a concern, you bring it to the management superintendent and the prosecution would be conducted. I, you can't take any action that will undermine, pose, compromise, or harm school personnel in the performance of their duties. I alluded to that before. J, refer and complain to the superintendent of the school. So I'm going to quickly go over just some examples of some of the concepts. And this advisory opinion, the Ethics Commission concluded that Board members cannot participate in exit interviews of staff. Because of the high number of resignations in this particular school district, the trustees want to understand what's going on. And while that may be a legitimate question, the trustees cannot conduct an interview, exit interview. Instead, the approach would be instruct the superintendent to conduct exit interviews of staff to get the answer to your concerns as opposed to you taking initiative and wanting to do it themselves. Second example of the advisory opinion that there was Board of Education who decided that they didn't want to have only two Board members compiling an interview committee when the staff was invited superintendent to assist the Board in determining who the next superintendent would be and who the superintendent would make the recommendation. There was concern as to whether this was a violation of the School Ethics Act. They said it wasn't a violation per se of the School Ethics Act, but the two trustees that were committed to be involved were strictly limited to advisory role as opposed to be involved in the interview or deliberation possible with the committee as to who you recommend to the next step. This next slide shows some examples. Trustee can volunteer for extra curriculum activity. It would result in directly ordering or directing school personnel, because the perception would be that that individual who's directing school personnel would be consistent with the role and function of the Board bedroom. Trustee cannot volunteer to be a leader of a school club. A volunteer could however be involved in construction sets of musical plays, because that would be ministerial, not directing. A trustee can serve as a member of a local education foundation. It's not a per se conflict, even though there is an overlap, but what will happen is that Board member who may be a trustee of a local educational foundation would have to review himself or personnel for the decision, but it doesn't preclude if that trustee is going to be involved. Just very quickly, if you want to look at some examples of how school ethics decisions actually dealt with complaints. And they had a violation here where in an executive session that a Board member engaged and was involved in an executive discussion involving her child. And even though that the Board member was not involved in the discussions and deliberation, the mere presence of that Board member would seem to be a conflict. Remember, the discussions that take place, if someone is affected by that, rewards the free exchange of information in that executive discussion. So we believe that so long that person didn't get involved and wasn't a conflict, it's mere presence. Another example, you just take a look at where a Board member was recommended using the Board email to plan a unity wall at school grounds. It wasn't district sponsored, but gave the impression that it was Board sponsored. Once again, the Board member realized his position as a trustee to gain participation and involvement in an activity that wasn't a Board sponsored activity. There was criticism of the superintendent on what the superintendent did in terms of changing graduation. And again, that is an example of undermining the superintendent, of having compromised the effectiveness of the superintendent. Those concerns could be dealt with privately, but not at a public board meeting. And another example, a Board member shared confidential information about seeking a Board subsequent vote on the agenda of the faculty charter in advance of the Board decision and that was a defaulting of confidential information. So how do we deal with the dilemma of free speech of a Board member and free speech that would otherwise be respected by an individual trustee? Well, it's a bit hell that a Board member does not sacrifice to her freedom of speech, but as a trustee, will have to qualify and provide a disclaimer. And disclaimer would have to be identifying oneself as a Board member, indicating that the position taken by the Board member is that of an individual, doesn't reflect anything on the Board, and that would be their own minimum requirements, how to have an effective disclaimer. It doesn't mean that a disclaimer itself would be foolproof, but that would be the minimum. It'd be posted on the social media page, a letter to the editor, or any other communication with the public. More often than not, you would be a trustee if you know that you are a trustee and without a qualifier, your words are going to be repeated to the Board unless you qualify and it's your individual statement. There is a little consistency with that concept. And what I mean by a little consistency with concept, that many members of the public who are not aware of the fact that you are a Board member and by virtue of the fact that you are identifying yourself as a Board member, that you make it more knowledgeable to the general public. that you make it more knowledgeable to the general public. But because trustees are elected, they have a website. The prevailing viewpoint of the commission is that most people who know you're a trustee you have to have a disqualifier. Because the most important thing is to not place yourself in a position that would compromise the board. So there's social media guidelines. Social media is there, we can't avoid it, it's a necessary principle. So I indicated to use some bullet point suggestions on how to navigate. Don't post anything that would violate any of the district's policy. Avoid making definitive statements. Don't disclose confidential information. Do not use to refer to the board member title and simply to one business. Refrain from communication to social members without board members regarding any board business. Don't respond to any person regarding board, school, board, business or any social network. Don't post any information on the social network determined by the Ethics Commission to be violated by the act. So you say that you don't know it's a violation of the act. Well, if you don't know, and before you do something, it would be my strong recommendation to get an authorization from the administration to get advice so that you don't go in the area that you didn't prefer going to get into. The right to share would be the disclaimer that I mentioned that would help protect you from improperly conveying a message and whatever you're saying affects that of the board. It is helpful, but it's not foolproof because it may since it's a violation of the School Ethics Act. But it does not be an absolute defense of one of the parts that was not disclaimered. But at the absolute minimum, that disclaimer should be, if in fact a trustee created a campaign webpage, while there is nothing prohibiting the trustee from having a campaign webpage, my suggestion would be once the trustee is elected, delete that webpage and disregard any communication you would make on your personal webpage. Be mindful of the fact that it involves school business, board business. Then you should add a disclaimer on there to release, insulate yourself from claiming that you're speaking on behalf of the board, but you're simply speaking on behalf of yourself in a different situation. Hopefully that will prevent an ethical place from following against you. It would be too naive to say, okay, just avoid all the topics of being on social media, but you can't live with it and you can't live without it. You'll have a hard copy of these guidelines and they want to use as a checklist. Look at the language disclaimer, that would be helpful. Because it's going to be a template that could read. So that hopefully would give you guidance on how to navigate. Here's a checklist on the queue for conflict of interest. You could read that in your own, which should be understandable. If in fact you do have a conflict and it triggered this. Again, if you're not so sure how to apply it, please seek advice as to whether you can or cannot participate. And also create a teaching in event that your personal situation would apply and that may save a phone call to the mission administration to seek advice to see where your advice fit in. I tried to cover the highlights with some practical applications. I don't know whether anyone has any questions. I'll be happy to continue now or after today because I know I probably overextended myself at this consideration. But I felt that to be comprehensive and also fulfill the obligation to provide you with training, I just wanted to read off the slides and say, okay, neither of those. I tried to give as much practical application as possible and hopefully you can learn maybe a handful things and are successful and you did it and so on. Questions? We all could be superstars. We need at least one question to make sure everybody was listening.
Just one. On slide 15, when you're talking about Code of Ethics, A.
Okay.
And it is pertaining to, let me just get back to there too. Enforcing laws, rules, regulations of the State Board of Education. Court orders pertaining to schools desire changes. So we talked about only legal and ethical procedures. When we are voting on accepting founded and unfounded HIV cases, if we are like, we are required by law to vote for those based on our own personal opinion or based upon the law?
I'm having a pause because when I read that, I was expecting a question on this. And this is a, it's longer from trustees. And the HIV statutes are very controversial and some individual trustees may disagree with the law. The way you apply this Code of Ethics is that you, you have an obligation to enforce the law. So simply because you disagree with it is not consistent with your obligations to enforce the law. That's different as to whether you agree with the conclusions. So if you get a HIV determination and you reject it because you believe the facts are not supportive for the statutory criteria, that's your problem, in matter of fact, that's your obligation. Because otherwise, HIVs will not be submitted to the board to accept, reject, or modify. On the other hand, if you're not voting for HIVs, could you philosophically disagree with it? In my humble opinion, then you are disagreeing with the law when you have an obligation to uphold and enforce the law. And that if there's a disagreement with the HIV law, we're there morals, we're just applying the law. It's up to the legislature to change, the regulations to be revised, and the process for changing it to perhaps reflect a reason why anyone may believe that the law, that they disagree with the law. So it's really a two-pronged aspect of it. We're not saying that everything that comes in the HIV investigation, for example, I agree it. But in my opinion, you have an obligation to determine whether to accept, reject, or modify. And not simply because you disagree with the law. Because there are a lot of laws we may disagree with it and we can't subjectively say we like this or we don't. If you follow your obligation to comply with the law, that is not only your legal responsibility, but it helps you navigate a lot of issues where there are going to be legal requirements.
So would it be fair to say then that if a board member was specifically voting no on any founded cases over and over again, that would be a breach of law?
I can't reach that conclusion because I don't know for each HIV, what was the rationale behind that trustee? And when you vote, you are not obligated to say why you voted. So theoretically, I can understand what your questions are, but it would be very hard to determine what was the basis of that trustee voting no simply because they vote no on all HIVs.
Okay.
Okay, I hope Marie hasn't opened the floodgates. Is this on? In here? No. So I have a question about enforcement of policies. On occasion, you wonder if a policy has been followed. What would be the procedure to pursue enforcement of policies? That you've seen in your experience?
Well, it depends what the violation of the policy is. You don't determine if the policy is violating. If you believe that the policy has been violated, you're sharing concerns with the administration to find out whether in fact the policy has been violated. Again, you're talking very general, but then you would have to ascertain what policy is potentially violating, determine what the violation is and whose potential individual who's violating the policy. But that's how you would determine whether the policy is being implemented. You're not the judging jury. If there's a concern, send it to the administration.
Right, a quick question. Could you explain the proper use of abstaining from voting automatically?
Sure. An abstention could be for multitude of reasons. An abstention could be that you're not able to make a decision on it and you have an abstention. Sometimes people abstain because of conflict and as a result of which they are, were not, were not voting on it. There are other situations where someone who has a conflict could recuse themselves and that removes that board member from the court. So the abstention is, that's not abstentions, accusing and vote is complishance. It's not deemed to have the effect of the abstention. It would be an act. An abstention is basically taking a step back and acquiescing to the majority. So that's an abstention. An abstention vote does not necessarily require an explanation because once you do a roll call vote, yea, nay, abstain. There's no discussion or explanation. If in fact during the discussion of a resolution, you are inclined to abstain and you want the record to reflect the reasons why, you could say it in a discussion, but when the vote comes around, yea, yea, nay, or abstain.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Board members? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is that Action Agenda Items Public Comment. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed one opportunity to address the board regarding action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address and write both in the notebook provided. Be mind, be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public, the public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as a question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer issue to the superintendent. Issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of the session. If you are going to make a comment, please state the action agenda item number prior to your comments. Are there any comments from the public on action agenda items only? Any comments from the public on action agenda items only? Seeing none, we'll just move on to committee reports. First up, MTA report, Mr. Dull.
Good evening, board members, committee members. A little belated Happy New Year, but I took a little COVID break during the holidays. So it's good, it's good to be back here and sorry I missed the reorganization. Congratulations President Todd and congratulations Vice President Spina for being inducted and voted on. I want to give a special thanks to our ground, our maintenance and custodial crews, not only through the floods that they've had to deal with here in the community, but lately with the weather we've been having. We have acres of parking lots and aisles of roads and walkways that really need to be tended to. They've done a fantastic job, obviously sometimes doing it in pitch black and doing it early in the morning and all times to make sure everything is ready to go for our students. There even have been times where our schools are ready, but our roads outside of our schools are not. So we do a wonderful job here to make sure that schools are ready. I also want to thank Superintendent McLaughlin for really dealing with some challenging decisions. You know, when we have to look at what do we do in schools? Do we do a delayed opening? Do we do an early dismissal? Do we have to close schools? So I know that McLaugh, Mrs. Superintendent McLaughlin is doing a fantastic job with that and also putting student and staff safety just first. And that's really what we do. We have so many students here we need to take care of and staff we need to get to the buildings and buses on the roads constantly, sometimes very early in the morning when it's dark out and icy. So we do appreciate that. Obviously, it's giving some challenges with snow days, but that's just the way it goes. We hope that Mother Nature will be kind to us for the rest of the season that we have. Some other news within the MTA. Just want to let you know that we did have a partnership with Twine, a little gift shop at Hopewell during the holidays and they gave us part of the proceeds. Through that partnership, that went to our MTA Assists, little group or fundraiser. And that actually helps people in Montgomery who have some food insecurities or even problems paying some bills and we're able to support and help them. We also partnered with the Elks Club over winter break and helped five families in Montgomery with some food insecurities as well. So great partnerships that we're doing and we have that MTA Assist to help, you know, our community members. Last thing, we will continue our Read Aloud series that we've been doing. We had a book reading this month, as a matter of fact, Amara and the Bats. That took place and then all the recipients, all the participants do get a copy of the book, those who attend. We have three more coming up that will be posted soon on social media. We also advertise on, through the PTA, they're kind enough to add it in there as well. Those titles are The Poorest Color, oh, I'm sorry, The Proudest Color, Beautifully Me, and Leila's Lunchbox. So those are for orchard and village school parents and students who would like to attend. Like I said, it will be posted soon for anyone that wants to sign up and attend and also get a free copy of the book. And we're trying to get some different members from our association to volunteer. So it's always nice to see those, for kids to go on to see their teacher or someone they had, their related arts teacher, to get some variety on there. It makes the Read Aloud even more exciting. So thanks for your time and have a good rest tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Dull. Representative reports. Going on to board member delegate representative reports. Somerset County School Board Association, PTSA, MAC Legislative, New Jersey School Board Association, Educational Services, Rocky Hill, Montgomery Township Alliance. I know there was a Somerset County School Board Association meeting attended by myself. Board Member Elect. Jernigan, Board Member Spina. There was a lot of information covered. I'm not fully prepared to discuss everything that was discovered in the meeting. Either one of you have any comments? We can certainly wait until next month when we fully digest everything that was discussed.
I mean, it was last week.
Yeah.
I have like two, three pages of notes. There was a lot of information, so I'm good to pull back.
Board Member Elect. Jernigan?
I'm in agreement.
Thank you. Any other reports?
I'm just going to share, I attended the first Montgomery Rocky Hill Municipal Alliance Youth Services Commission and the meeting. And in attendance was our High School Youth Action Board Committee led by, this is last hour, the recommendation to Superintendent McLaughlin, we did perhaps invite them, maybe as we get closer to the May month when they're celebrating or recognizing whether they'll have them there this month. The Youth Action Board is doing a lot of work for the Municipal Alliance and that, you know, our high school students are really doing a lot of good work to support their peers. They're middle schoolers. I think it'd be nice to hear from them if we have the opportunity to see what they're doing for, you know, high school.
Thank you, Board Member Franco Herman. We'll now go to the board committee reports.
Excuse me, sorry. May I report? Please, thank you, Board President. I just wanted to report on MSEPDA. Also had a meeting and really important, they're having transition and turnover in terms of leadership and membership. So they very much are pleading for people to reach out and join MSEPDA. They absolutely need volunteers to be able to continue that committee. And they are having a dance on March 15th. So I'm also announcing that and details are on the website. Thank you. Thank you.
And my apologies, board member Dallin. Next we have board committee reports, Assessment Curriculum and Instruction Committee, board member Dallin.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank Assistant Superintendent Damian Papa for facilitating our first meeting as I transition into the role. We spent a lot of time going through our ACI norms, which were quite impressive in my opinion. And we talked about just the idea of decorum in terms of when we, when we come together as a committee. There was one addition that was recommended in terms of using addition, an additional norm that really talked about the idea of coming in with best intentions and trust in terms of the committee board members. We then moved into learning more about the High Impact Tutoring Grant that was led by Fiona Bordland, again, really impressive, and that is about to launch and take place. There will be more detailed information posted on our website, so please look for that so that you have a good understanding of the grant that we were awarded to support third, fourth, and fifth grade students and tutoring initiative. We also heard details about the High School Choir Performance Tour to Ireland. No, we don't get to go, fellow board members, but it's truly extraordinary and once in a lifetime opportunity, so we are going to vote on that later tonight, is my understanding. And then lastly, Corey Delgado in his new role talked about his, I'm sorry. Yeah, we did, yeah. He just mentioned that he's going to be part of this committee with the intention of not just talking about our academic goals, but also our health and wellness goals for our students, which I wanted to duly note. And then we just talked about future meeting dates, which we all put into our calendars. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Thank you again, board member Dallin. Up next, Operations Facilities and Finance Committee, no longer me, it is now board member Beal.
Thank you. So our committee met on Friday, it was a Thursday. So even though the school was closed, we all gathered together and we had a really, really productive meeting. We actually went overtime like half hours. So our board administrator and superintendent shared an update about the recent school closings due to the weather conditions. The superintendent explained various considerations taken into account before this decision is made to close schools for half day of full day. For example, we have a three-tiered bus schedule. Our younger students get on the last bus route to return home. When the weather forecast projects heavy snow, the administration evaluates early dismissal versus full closure. They must consider projected weather conditions for the time when their last bus leaves the schools. And they always keep students' safety first as a priority in their decision making. The administration has identified a need for the additional playground at Orchard Hills. This is really exciting. The existing playground is too small to accommodate first and second graders and full-day kindergarten students. So director of facilities, Michael Neal, already took action. He met with the architect to identify a viable placement of the new playground. He created various proposals of the playground design and the administration requested input from their Orchard Hills teachers about what type of design would be best fitting and engaging for our students. Michael Neal shared some preferred by audit, by our teachers' design concepts with the committee. The designs were great. They offered a lot of options for students to play. They took into considerations that they would engage as many students as possible at the same time to engage them as a team to play. They also took into consideration the physical abilities of all students to make this playground friendly, fun, and engaging for all children. The business administrator shared update on the status of high school turf field replacement as well as purchase of the new radio and security cameras for schools as we discussed last month. Both projects proceed as scheduled. The turf replacement is scheduled to be completed over the summer, so we will have something to celebrate when the new school, the school year starts. The committee received an update about an outstanding balance in the lunch accounts. A few months ago, this issue has been brought to the board's attention. When students come to school, they are given food even when funds in their lunch account have not been replenished. We want them to feel well during the school, during the school day. There is unfortunately a substantial balance that keeps accumulating in the unpaid lunch account. We are asking parents to help address this issue. The district has reached out to the parents, reminding them about how to access their pay school central platform to review children account, balance, check their balances account, account balances, and set up auto pay replenishments. Thank you to all parents who already took advantage of these instructions and have been monitoring their children's lunch account balances. If anyone is uncertain how to set up this account or how to use it, please reach out to our business administrator for assistance. We are here to help. The last item on the agenda was the business administrator's update on his discussions with the Van Harlenken Historical Society regarding schoolhouse next to the Orchard Hills School. The Historical Society is energized to upgrade the schoolhouse. We understand they have a vision for new programs to offer our residents and students and offer them new learning opportunities. This is really exciting. We have reviewed the existing contract for evaluating what responsibilities the district has for maintenance of the properties surrounding the schoolhouse. Our business administrator will extend an invitation to the representative of the Van Harlenken Historical Society to attend our next of committee meeting to discuss the vision for the property, learning opportunities for our students, and the terms of the contract. Any questions?
Very comprehensive, very comprehensive.
Thank you, board member Beal. Up next, Policy and Communications Committee Co-Chair, Will Kajerian.
Thank you. So we had a meeting and we have a couple members that had to recuse themselves from the policy part and Patrick joining the policy discussion. There were four policies that, well, actually two policies, similar policies for staff and for teaching staff as well as board staff. We had some updates, these are not mandated policy, however, there has been a recommended update for both examination for cause as well as right of privacy for both teaching and support staffs, which we will be moving forward today for approval. It is, I would say the portion, the big portion of the discussion that we had during the policy was around the updates and the review of our policies and how do we proceed with that today? We heard a presentation from NJ SBA and their approach to continuous checking and updating and refreshing policies, making sure we don't have redundancy, making sure that all of our policy as per the ethics is really relevant for our students going forward, which was also part of the discussion for Somerset session. So I think that will continue that conversation, but I just wanted to bring it up to the board that that's something that we really want to focus on this year and spend some time on that. And if you feel passionate, just as I do about policy, feel free to offer your assistance because there will be all hands on deck. As you heard, there's a, it's an extended process. I think the lady mentioned six to two, six months to two years it could take for us to go through all of these policies. So this will be something that will require some heavy lifting, so I would appreciate if any of you are interested in that. Please let me know. In addition to that, the second portion of our meeting was around communication and Cookie joined me for the communication part. I think we talked about, Mary did a comprehensive overview of the calendar, which I think Joanna validated with some of the discussion you had in off as far as how you go through the process of assessing that and we appreciate that and understand that. Also, we talked about the strategic plan and our next session is coming up in January. So for the community, just so you know, January 31st is our next session. Please register. Even if you decide very late to come and join and the registration is closed, show up, there'll be plenty of room for you to participate. And there will be also linked in emails now to the first session and the results from the first sessions, which are already available to you on the website that you can access. The last piece that we discussed was around communication, the survey, the specialists that we've hired and how do we continue improving that? I think over the last 12 months, we talked about having a communication survey with Mary and she's of support for us to communicate with, communicate, I mean, to, to share with the community and get your feedback directly of how you would like to be communicated with. I think we have so many avenues now through social media, emails, websites. We want to make sure that we do the right thing and that you are all aware in the timely fashion, so that will be coming through as well. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned policies. Could you just give the, the public an idea of the vast number of policies there are in this district?
Thousands? I mean, between bylaws, which are very much focused on the board, rules and regulations, there's also policies associated, not only as we heard today with staff, teaching staff, and then our students, and then broad school policies. And I think what we've been finding out as we review some of those, there's a lot of updates that are being sent from Strauss Esme, just little tweaks based on the new language, like Mary brought it up, pupil versus a student, right? So these are all things that need to continue being updated, but it would be nice for us to really connect them. As NJ SBA representatives stated, we do have a lot of policies. I was just looking at the attendance policy and, you know, I noticed that there's a broad scope in different parts, regulations versus policies. So you have to kind of play in between those two. It would be nice to have a path for us to combine those, have them in the one place, reference to other areas where you could find the information you're looking for. So I think it would be worth our while to kind of reevaluate it and try to do a better job in having them be easily accessed, more easily accessed than otherwise.
Thanks much. Any other questions? Board members?
I don't have any question, but I have a problem. So I do agree that maybe it's an opportunity for us to go through the policies and see which ones require an update. It is a major undertaking, but by listening to the NJ SBA rep, I'm thinking that maybe there was an opportunity to do like a hybrid method. We can use partially their assistance within the view and then some policies we can review between us and we can maybe chip in, you know, create like an ARPA committee to kind of help, you know, extra step of offense. So something to consider.
I think board member Beal. All right, last but not least, Human Resources Committee, HRC, met on January 9th virtually. First item we talked about was two hiring issues. The first one is Director of Special Services. That posting is still open and we're still looking for candidates. The current, the interim Director of Special Services, while she will not be on that committee, she will be giving her observations and input through that process. Secondly, we have hired a Supervisor of Maintenance and Grounds. His name is Drew Vandersee and he is one for approval on tonight's agenda. He will be the Supervisor of Maintenance and Grounds and reporting to Mike O'Neill. Other big item we talked about were the upcoming recruitment fairs. Well, Kelly Mattis, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, said that our hiring, we are very good at staffing levels right now, however, we do regularly attend recruitment fairs. First one will be at Sac University on March 5th, second one at the College of New Jersey on March 6th, Monmouth University on March 15th, Central, to, Central to Jersey Program for the Improvement of First Educators Fair on March 21st, Jersey Core Educational Career Fair April 4th, New Jersey School Jobs Virtual Fair on April 18th. And one of the exciting things that we also talked about is having committee members, when they can, attend those fairs, just to get an idea of the recruitment process. I'm sure if any other board members were interested in attending, just let me and R. Kelly know and we can try to get you in those as well. Last item we talked about is personnel budget. Actually, at the next meeting, she will be sharing, HRC, what personnel has been requested and what she thinks will be recommended. And that is it for HRC. Any questions, comments from the board? Very nice. We'll move on. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the following board, board meeting minutes, December 19th, 2023, executive session meeting, December 19th, 2023, business meeting, January 5th, 2024, executive session meeting, January 5th, 2024, organization and business meeting.
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any questions? Comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Plumb.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
I mean, yes. Ms. Dallin.
Yes.
Ms. Beal.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Will Kajerian.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The board acknowledges all correspondence, emails to the board. Next item up, new business from the board, excuse me, new business from the board and the public. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make a comment, please state your name and address and write both in the notebook or laptop provided. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions. The board may need to refer issue to the superintendent if issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. New business public comment is now open. And we do ask that if you do plan on making a comment, if you could please line up so we can get an idea of people that will be making comments so we can try to move this along as expeditiously as possible.
John Mittner, 694 Millstone River Road. I just want to compliment Mary and Dwayne Washington and Mike O'Neill for canceling school, for making the delays. It does make our job easier. It does keep the kids safe. I know I see a lot of people always say, oh, why'd they cancel? You know, it's your kids on the line going. They're all responsible for them. And most people don't know it. The salt doesn't work after 25 degrees Fahrenheit. So you're stuck with slippery conditions. So anybody visiting the facilities gets hurt, you're responsible for that, the kids, everything. So I just want to say thank you. I think you guys, all three of you, made a good decision. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Scott Schurgerman, 137 Bridgepoint Road. I'd like to address the board specifically about special education. We have a neurodiverse child in the school. We have a neurodiverse child in the school district classified with dyslexia. And the district is working to declassify her special education using the discrepancy model with no policy, even though the state legislature has passed a bill saying that the discrepancy model should not be used as the sole version. If a child is outside of the discrepancy but two years behind in their reading, the district is saying there's no need for special education. This has been a very frustrating process for us. We've worked with, we've tried to meet with Superintendent McLaughlin. We are in a due process hearing now, so she denied our request as conservative parents. We have gone through multiple IEP meetings. In our latest IEP meeting, we were informed that in a staff meeting, the Director of Special Services said the district is declassifying children because there are too many white children classified with special education. She said this on record. Both the district and us have it on record. She then clarified, she did not deny it. She said, I informed the staff that there's a disproportionality in this district. And it was later confirmed by other staff members that Superintendent McLaughlin said the same thing at staff meetings. So our daughter, who is two years behind her reading level, is not getting special education or is being denied because the discrepancy between what she needs or what her potential is and what she is testing at is not far enough away, even though she has a two-year discrepancy in her reading level. So I would really like the board to look at a policy around this. There is no policy on how this is done or anything. We have, so we were not at SEPTA, but we were at the other group who is supposed to partner with this. It's been just such a challenge, like our daughter is being left behind. And it is extremely frustrating. And I thought it was something unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Grant, 6 Livingston Drive. Good evening, good night. Last year around this time, we were talking about the South African Democratic Teachers Union and a trip to South Africa that the board had planned to take. And we found out about it in kind of a circuitous way. It wasn't transparent that that was going to happen ever to the board, ever to the staff, went to South Africa around this time, and planning it around this time last year. At the time, I talked about South Africa having had military exercises with Russia, China, South Africa being a member of BRICS, Brazil, India, Russia, China. South Africa, now Saudi Arabia, Kuwait are joining BRICS. It's really an international community that unseats the US dollar as the international currency. I talked about how South Africa was systematically torturing, raping, and murdering farmers, white farmers. And I talked about how South Africa was an emerge linking in a constitutional amendment that you could actually confiscate land from white farmers. Well, they haven't done that yet, as far as I know, but they did, they did make it a law that if you're a farmer, 51% of your farm has to be owned by a black person if you want to export to the European Union and Great Britain. And that came out in the Epoch Times a month and a half ago. So with that under our belt, I think it's pretty clear that South Africa is an enemy of our country in many facets, economically, morally, racially. The list can perhaps go on. So I want to get some clarity from the board about what they might be planning to do this year with a potential trip to South Africa or any similar country. Is there anything of that nature planned? And I'd like to get some clarity on the facts from the board about our relationship with South African Democratic Teachers Union, who has pretty clearly been uncovered by people in the community as being a communist organization. So, and it's sad to talk about South Africa like this, I have to say, because despite of all the best efforts of Nelson Mandela, it's sad to see what has happened to a country that once was a great country with great potential and what has happened because of the racism that they, that they had become subject to. So I'd like all the facts about any potential trips to South Africa or any other country of that nature, and facts about our relationship with the South African Democratic Teachers Union. Thank you.
You just please sign it.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have a, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. This is Raj Kultul, 24 Cheshawar Street. Thank you for the opportunity. Again, happy new year to you all. Couple of things I wanted to bring into, at least my opinions and what I thought. One, I, I mean, I've been sending emails, I think, with correspondence as one of them regarding tennis facilities, implement, like lines, having a tennis facility or tennis education early, like Eurobets or something like that. And even like having a full-time coach in that, a full-time coach for tennis. The second thing is on STEM courses. So those are the two correspondence. So one of the questions that I had is when I make correspondence and stuff, and when it's, board looks at it and board sends it to superintendent for recommending that they can do it. I didn't know what the process was, the process involved was, as if it's starting from correspondence or stating it here to eventually if it, you know, whatever is the process to get to, even if it gets implemented or what, it does not get implemented, whatever happens. I'd like to know what that process is. That'd be great. Second thing, I think one of the things I've been hearing about the policy is while I think one, one, one of the people I confronted that worked with NJ SBA, I didn't want, I was just wondering if you're looking at policies and considering last year with the ranking and stuff, right? Can we look at the top one percent or two percent of the schools, like in the top of the ranking in STEM or something, and see what their policies are and how we are? Maybe that'd give us an opportunity. And this is just my opinion, but give us an opportunity to see how, what are the areas where we can improve or what areas things that we can help kids to actually, you know, get to an excellent in their education. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any other questions, comments from the public? Any other questions, comments from the public? Any more questions from the public? From the public, sorry. Public comment session is now closed. Superintendent McLaughlin, would you like to respond to any of the comments, questions?
Sure. So I just want to go on record saying that I would never refuse to be with the parent. Once something goes into a legal situation, I am not permitted to meet with the parent without legal representation. I also want to go on record saying that I never have nor I never will publicly state in a meeting or even in private that anyone should declassify a student. I am not part of an IEP team, and I would never make that recommendation. And I am appalled that someone would come out publicly and say that I said that when they never heard me say it. Thank you. Oh, and sir, about the tennis courts. Mr. Jack Trent, our business administrator, is going to be reaching out to you about the whole process and moving forward. And thank you for the input about the policy. And thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. Now we're going to action agenda items. I'll entertain a motion to approve action agenda items 1.1 through 4.2.
Mr. Todd, showing a note that there needs to be a correction on personnel agenda item 4.1. Page 2, item C1, salary should indicate $110,000.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. And let me add one addition, too. We will consider, yeah, we will consider this item number 1.1D. This is HIV resolution that was discussed in the second session. Be resolved that the board denies the appeal in HIV number 251836 UMS 09282023. That's it. So I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in the second to approve items 1.1 through 4.2 with the additions. Roll call, please, Mr. Palumbo.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Belec.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Abstention on 1.2, 3161, 4161, 3324, 4324, and 4.2. Yes to everything else.
Ms. Harris.
Yes to everything. And abstain on 1.2, 3161, 4161, 3324, 4324, and 4.2.
Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes, with extension from item 1.3.
Ms. Willett, the adjourned.
Yes, and I would like to have a discussion on item 3.8. Just from an election of delegate, as we're approving the board member to represent us, I would like for us to understand what that role is. Because I don't think we've ever discussed in the past the roles and responsibility of an election of delegate position.
So as delegate, that person will attend all Somerset County Educational Services Commission meetings. That person will be empowered to vote as a delegate for the Montgomery Township School Board.
Could that person also represent any potential changes that we would like to make as a school district as part of that process? Is that included, or is it just purely a voting function?
I believe it's a voting function. I can do a little bit more research and get back to you.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
So if we have to do a little bit more research, should we be still voting on the item today?
She would have to make a motion.
I'm just asking.
If you don't want to vote, you'd have to make a motion to withdraw.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the item from our agenda today.
I'd like a second. Absolutely. Questions on the motion?
When is the next voting session of the NJ SBA mission?
You specifically talked about Somerset County Educational Services.
Yeah.
I don't know when the next meeting is, so I'll ask.
I mean, if it's before, we need to have a voting member delegated.
Correct.
So tabling that, to me, seems, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think it's every six months.
So when was the last one? Let's see.
Let's get this one second. I'm trying to see if we can pull up the information up real quickly.
Who was the delegate last year? Can I, I mean, I've done it before, I'll say. I was the alternate when we had board number spec was the delegate that went. I know I did go once to one of the meetings. And it was, there was, you know, votes on a variety of things, just like we have. It's a very similarly run meeting. They didn't, they did have an opportunity for new business to be brought as well.
Are they agenda items or voting items specific to a district? Or is it Somerset County wide?
Somerset County wide. Somerset. And then there's also, you know, like they do talk about what the coordination is with other counties and that level, but it's not very, it's not district-specific level.
And the agenda is provided in advance so that it can be shared with the rest of the board?
Yes.
All right. So I, I think if we can assure that an agenda or any action items that are on the agenda can be shared to the full or prior to the meeting, if we're at the meeting, would that satisfy? Any questions?
I would wonder, I would wonder if they would have to do, anything they would vote on, what would have to do with any unions that we have here? And where they would have to.
I think this is for Somerset County wide. It's got nothing to do with, I mean, based on the experience of either board member Spina or Michelle DeJupre. You also a delegate last year? This is about.
I can't recall anything that was district-specific.
Okay.
I mean, I remember. I don't know all the agendas. Talking about things that like, as far as, like transportation issues. These are big ones. A very big one, dealing with like who's servicing buses from, you know, a multitude of districts and what, it was very, very, that, that's from a level.
County.
Very county level. I'm trying to see if I can find the agendas. That's what I'm trying to do as well.
So it looks like the next meeting is February 7th of 2024. Would we maybe ask our attorney to weigh in? This is a current option to vote as opposed to item, ask this, or maybe they should take more time and table it for a moment?
I wanted this parliamentary procedures to assist you help govern agenda items. When motions are presented, it's first and second. And then there's a discussion. So the issue that's being raised right now should have been brought during the discussion phase. You can't have a discussion on a motion just in second, once you have a global vote, because that's the voting process. So the concerns that you have is not necessarily who's appointed, but you're looking to define the parameters of what that individual can do and function. So it's not the question of who's appointed, but you're questioning the scope of the authority. So the way the parliamentary procedures right now, you have on the agenda a number of items, including the point. So because we're in a roll call vote right now, your only vote would be to approve or reject this motion. You could deal separately with the parameters and the authority of this person being appointed separately. But this is an appointment, and you either vote yes or no on that appointment, and it's a separate item. What you want to do is to circumscribe the authority of that delegate in participating on behalf of the board.
Are you saying it's too late to pull 3.8 out to vote on?
It's not, I'm sorry, I, I.
You're saying is it too late to pull 3.8 out?
It would have been done before motion and second. It could have been a motion to table that resolution, or it could be part of a discussion, discussions that's taking place right now. And that would then result in somebody deciding to table it or someone deciding to supplement the motion to indicate what the parameters and authority of that delegate.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
How could we make sure that we do this right when it's time? So board member left adjourned brought something up while she was going through her vote, right? And so when is the right time for her to bring that up so that then we don't start voting and then have to have a discussion where it's supposed to happen?
That's a good question. And the simple answer to it, you have a motion seconded and discussion is a question.
So maybe we should start asking for that?
I, I saw there was, but it just.
There was, it was, I did not do it on that, this particular agenda.
But you did it as a lump sum that included everything.
Correct.
Right. So it was moved to second. There will be a discussion of questions. And then after discussions and questions, then the board secretary would then take the vote and vote the yes, no, abstain, three options. And if as a result of the discussion, there was a belief that either a motion should be tabled, there could be any motion should be tabled, or you want to raise concerns about trying to set up the parameters of the authority, then that would be a second motion that you want to either make independently or add on to present as a consent. or add on to presence as a consent agenda, you probably would then have to have a second motion that would discuss the parameters of the authority. Because if you start to think about it, is that if a trustee innocently wants to discuss the merits of it, you already had X number of trustees voting without the benefit of that trustee's comments. So it deprives the trustees who voted before of making an informed decision based on a comment that took place after the fact. But if all of this took place as part of the discussion phase in the first and second, then everybody would be able to consider the trustee viewpoint, and a determination can be made whether they're comfortable voting on it, they want to table it, they want to amend it, but that would be the voting function.
So are there any options right now?
It's, it's to vote no or yes, the remainder of trustees. And that doesn't necessarily mean if you decide that the votes are to point this one, that you can't add it separately, present a motion that's seconded, that would set forth what the parameters are of this individual making a determination, and that could be done with any of the delegates. I presume historically that that person that's appointed is the person's responsibility acting on behalf of the board, then may or may not have had access to the agenda in advance to defend the board in terms of how that person would vote. That's another issue in terms of what you want to give authority to that delegate, and that's going to be dependent upon, do you have sufficient time before a report meeting to know what the agenda is of a meeting, if you can give guidance, so you have logistical issues. More often than not, the delegate is acting on behalf of the board, but if the board believes that there should be some kind of view by the full board, that's entirely within your department, and you have to decide how to legisively accomplish that, when in fact such a committee may not have their agenda that would coincide with your ability to have that agenda reviewed, bet it behind your board, and make an informed decision. So I think it's the best of intentions of wanting to have it. If you do want it, the question that has to come, it should be accomplished. Well, the motion right now is already voted, so you have to take a roll call vote, making trustees.
We did. And what?
Who for you? Everybody except them.
Ms. Willock. Ms. Willock, adjourned.
So you were your last person standing?
Yep.
But we feel that regardless.
Well, the motion really is not a vote. So it's withdrawn. So I think what probably requires further discussion, if in fact the majority of the board wants to have the view of any decision that may be made by your delegate responsibility, it'll probably require you to contact the entity for which that person is going to be developed, to find out logistically what, when their agenda will be published, to find out whether that could be reconciled. Otherwise, you may have a situation that you're, if you're requiring your delegate to have authority on the full board, that may never happen because of logistics of it. So I don't think you have enough information to make an informed decision whether it's possible. Here, your resolution simply says who that delegate would be, but you're touching upon something broader than whether it should be any individual trustee standing pointing the delegate, correct?
Correct.
So I, so I think motion as per its pass, pointing this individual, but I think.
Still have one vote. Board Member McLaughlin.
Yes.
You could, you could also stay on that, on that one aspect of the motion.
That's okay, because he was a good outline of one.
Yes, thank you so much.
But your concerns are legitimate, and the question becomes, is it legitimately possible that something could be discussed as to whether that is something that you want to place on agenda for board discussion? And probably for HRC, to make an informed decision, you can find out whether it's legitimately possible.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Thanks so much. You have comments, questions, concerns? It's now 9:26 PM. There were no announcements by the president unless Vice President Spina has any announcements. It's 9:26 PM. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those favorites, they die, oppose, same right, extension. We are adjourned. Thank you so much. Thank you, the whole community for showing up. Appreciate you.